Good morning and welcome to the PAPEE meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order. I have item number two, Call to the Public, and Jerry Van Gass. Good news, Jerry, right?
Of course. I'm smiling. Thank you, Laura, and subcommittee members, and the Parks Department. The last time we were here, we were requesting a memo of understanding between City Auditor's Office and the Parks Department. And you've got that in front of you now, that we'll have the full documentation going forward to present to the 3PI Committee. And we'll be talking about that later in Agenda Number 12. Also, we found out, I also read a letter or email last time about possibility of securing a Liquor Series V application out at Smeek for the new tenants. And I was assured yesterday by email that that was not in the works. So we're good to go forward. And I want to harp back to, we brought this up last fall. We would still like to see the Parks Board meetings videotaped, so there'd be a public record of those such as there is for this meeting. And we'll bring that up tomorrow at the Parks Board meeting. Thank you.
Sure. Councilman Waring?
In our legislative report yesterday, wasn't there a bill in the legislature to make the city do this very thing? Not just for this committee, but for all the committees. Now, I think the city took a position against it, and I voted against the city's position, I guess I'd say. But maybe if you could check on that and give that information, because they might want to go down to the Capitol and talk legislative about it and support it.
We can certainly talk to government relations and get a briefing on it, and then we can get back to Mr. Van Gass.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was just yesterday. I imagine it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim? Sarah Kowski?
Good morning. Thank you so much to answer everyone's questions. I was in a car accident. My buddy ran a red light and took the top of my thumb off, but they reattached it. This has been great. I'm giving you guys an option now that we didn't have before. You just sold the building in downtown for $300 million. You now have a way to give 3PI money, their money, back. This is great. We didn't have a way before, but now there is a way. It seems like everyone's putting their hand out since you have this extra money, the Diamondbacks and the basketball stadium, et cetera, et cetera. Now you guys have a place so you can take the money and give it back to us, to the people, so that they can really enhance the park system. So I'm asking at the present time that, let's see, the $1.8 million you took pretty much to pay the debt consequently for Papico that you shouldn't be taking 3PI money for, the other $15.7 million that consequently you took to pay off the golf course debt, we're not getting into the $1.2 million that you gave the zoo at the present time, because that's probably will be a special action that we're going to sue upon. But there's other things also. Since you have the money, we would like it reimbursed at the present time. So we're now asking for this money back. And I know it's kind of hard at this point, but if all the other people are putting their hands out and saying, "Oh, we need to do an upgrade at the Diamondback Stadium, and we need to do all this stuff," let's take care of the people where you took the money. Pretty much, you shouldn't have taken the money. You already have agreed to pay the money back. So I'm asking, give it back to us. Thank you.
Those are the two cards that I have to Call to the Public. Is there anybody else? Well, thank you. Item number three, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 25th, 27th, 2016 meeting?
Motion to, second.
Motion to approve. There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye, okay. Motion passes. Thank you. Items four through eight are for information only, but staff's here to answer any questions. Are there any members of the subcommittee that have any questions?
I have a question on number five. The last, our last subcommittee, I asked for an update on the nonprofit facilities operations. And I noticed that it's on the Parks Board agenda, but it's not on ours. Are we going to be getting that in the near future?
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, it will be coming in March. We'll present it first to the Parks Board, and then we'll bring it the next month to the subcommittee.
All right. And then the other thing I noticed is that the north building at the Margaret Hans Park, that there's going to be discussions of future use of that building located at Hans Park.
Madam Chair, Councilman Nalkowski, that is accurate. Basically, we're just asking them for any kind of direction on what they see us doing in the future.
And any type of direction, they would be, whoever, if there's an RFP or whatever, they would be financially responsible for bringing it up to standards and all that, and that there's no bond monies or city monies to help.
Madam Chair and Councilman Nalkowski, that is accurate. At this time, we're, if they ask us to issue an RFP, it will be known that there is no financial money available at this time for that building.
All right. Thank you.
And then item number six, Councilman Waring has some questions.
So about the golf course?
No.
Oh. Maybe it's not her. I would have sworn it was going to be her. So number six, I mean, I received a briefing, I think from ASU about some of their plans down there. Big plans, new clubhouse, new entryway, and so forth. But that is ASU and their foundation paying for it, right? Not the city.
Madam Chair and Councilman Waring, that is accurate. I have in the audience today, just here is Byron from the, he's the architect for ASU. And Byron Sampson, he is here just in case there was any questions that you all had, but there is no financial money from the City of Phoenix for this project. This project is exclusively funded by ASU and their foundation.
So, Madam Chair, Inger, so when would, when will we expect to see the things built?
So, Madam Chair and Councilman Waring, we should be, per the contract, we should see a building coming up out of the ground in the near future, and it should be completed or substantially completed by June of 2017.
Wow. Thanks. Pretty quick. Good.
Are there any further questions on items four through eight? If not, we have items nine through 10. They are for consent actions. There are no presentations planned, but staff is available if there are any questions. Is there a motion to approve the consent items? A consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes? Okay. Thank you. Items 11 through 13 are for information and discussion, and item number 11 is Hans Park Master Plan Update.
Madam Chair and members of the subcommittee, today I have with me Phil Weddle from Weddle Gilmore. Chris Floor is also here from Floor Associates to give an update on where we are in the current master plan process of Hans Park. Additionally, we have the Executive Director of the Hans Park Conservancy here, and I don't see any other members, but she's here today also just to be in support of the progress and the process going forward. I'm going to turn it over to Phil in just a second, but basically, want to tell you, we're going to come back in April, so this is just the first view of it. And then when we come back in April, we'll have some more details to finalize out the actual project. So I'm going to turn it over to Phil, and, you know, it might be, I guess I can just move this over here closer. There you go. Let's just trade.
Sorry.
Not sure where the other one went.
Musical chairs.
Only in the paint, Ege. I'll tell you. That's where we have all our fun.
Madam Chair and members of the subcommittee, we're happy to be here today to give you a brief update on the progress of the master plan refinement for Hans Park. To start with, just a little bit of background history to remind everyone, this began with the kind of master planning, community outreach, starting back in the summer of 2013 through the spring of 2014. We had a series of kind of extensive community engagement opportunities during that process, including approximately 2,000 people that came to the final presentation for the Hans Park Master Plan. We are currently working on the master plan refinement, and as Inger mentioned, our intent is to give you a preliminary presentation update today, and then coming back in April with a final presentation for your review. Hans Park, we believe, is a critical, in a critical location within the city. We have a great deal of energy in the development in and around the downtown district, and a lot of renewed energy in the midtown and the arts district. Hans Park is a critical location in terms of trying to link those two things that are happening. And we feel that because of that, there's really an important role for Hans Park in the kind of continued revitalization of downtown and the midtown area. The Hans Park Master Plan that was approved in 2014 is essentially divided into kind of three different zones that we discussed. The eastern zone is, we call the plateau. That's the area between Third Street and about First Street. That area is anchored by a performance pavilion band shell, but it's really meant to be a very kind of flexible, open space to host community events and festivals and a wide range of activities. And then the area at Central Avenue, which we call the Canyon, and that's meant to be a very active urban plaza. It's anchored by the iconic cloud shade structure and a kind of urban plaza, the firehouse being revitalized as a food and beverage destination, and a series of other elements. And then the western zone, which we call the valley, that's really intended to be more of kind of neighborhood-oriented area. It's got playscapes, dog park, turf fields, elements like that, or they're a little bit more neighborhood-oriented. We're going to focus most of our discussion today on what we think is the strategic Phase One, because that's really what we're trying to look at in terms of funding and phasing. We believe that there's a lot of reasons why that strategic Phase One should be located around Central Avenue. In part, it's, the park is currently, for many people's perception, divided into two sides, the east side and the west side. And the area at Central Avenue acts, in a lot of ways, as a kind of dividing space. So we believe kind of revisioning what that Central Avenue area is, is critical to kind of unifying the park into a single area, and it's critical to the kind of activation of the heart of the park. So for a lot of reasons, we believe that that's where that strategic Phase One should go. So we're going to focus most of our conversation in terms of what those Phase One improvements might include, because we believe, one of our tasks in this master plan refinement is to come with you, come to you with specific recommendations for what should be included in that Phase One, and strategies for implementation of that. So beginning in the area around Central Avenue, we have a series of new entries that we're creating into the park. We're creating kind of broad ramp gateways down into the park that would connect directly from Central Avenue. They would connect from the light rail stations that are on each side of the park, down into the park. We have the iconic cloud shade structure, which is at Central Avenue. And then we're also looking at how we can activate the space underneath the Central Avenue Bridge. Currently, that's not, it's not the most active space. So we're actually looking at how we can create more program opportunity there, and actually create leasable space in the, under that area, to where you could have opportunities to have more kind of activation in that area. To the northwest side of the Central Avenue Bridge, we're looking at developing a new skate park in that area. We've had a very strong community support for a skate park in Hans Park. It also provides us with activation day and night, and throughout the course of the week. So we think that that's a critical kind of activator of that part of the park. And then moving to the east side of the Central Avenue Bridge, we have the Canyon Plaza and the Firehouse. So that includes the cloud shade structure. Within the central plaza, we have gardens, water features, and park amenities. Coming down from the southeast entry into the park, we also have the location where we had a placeholder for the AIDS Memorial. That's something where we're still continuing to work with that group in terms of the integration and refinement of that in the master plan. The Firehouse redevelopment, we think, is another key component to the activation of the park. We are integrating that into the park master plan and looking for the opportunity to have a food and beverage destination there, which would, again, provide activation on the edge of the park day and night throughout the course of the week. And we think that that's another kind of key component to that, to that area. So within that area of the Phase One, these are the key elements that we would be proposing to include as a part of that Phase One. So it includes the area around Central Avenue, the cloud, the Central Avenue Bridge redevelopment, water feature splash pads, skate park, and the Firehouse food and beverage activation. We think that this is approximately $35 million for capital improvements to complete this. That's something that we're continuing to finalize and refine those cost estimates. The intent would be that that would be completed through a public and private partnership. In terms of the implementation plan, we recognize that the redevelopment of Hans Park's going to be a long-term effort. There's going to be both public and private sector support. In addition, the Phase One capital construction, as I mentioned, the intent would be that that would be a public-private partnership. We are hoping to have that be a 50-50 partnership. We're also looking at opportunities for earned income to increase and enhance the programming of the park. We know that programming is critical to the success and the activation of the park. And then I guess just highlighting, lastly, the impact of park redevelopment. Successful cities really have a history of kind of drawing energy from their signature parks. We believe that the redevelopment of the Hans Park will really be a highly compelling destination in the downtown, will help kind of continue that positive energy that's happening in the downtown now, and will help catalyze that and spur additional development. We think that the timing is going to be critical for this Phase One implementation, because there is a lot of positive energy in downtown right now, and it's important that we capitalize on that positive energy and allow the first phase for Hans Park to move forward in a timely manner to really help maintain and support that vibrancy. With that, entertain any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? Councilman Nalkowski?
The question I have is that, I know that in other areas of my district, we have impact fees, right? And that goes into parks, libraries, and community centers and all that, streets and lights and roads. Do we have any type of impact fees in the downtown or midtown area for new development coming in that we can actually use to kind of offset, or some type of matching grants or any of that?
Chairman Pastor, Councilman Nalkowski, at this time, there are no impact fees for this part of the city. We are looking at a variety of ways that, working with the private sector, that maybe we can leverage any kind of other funding. And so that's one of the things that we'll be bringing back to the next meeting in April of what the ideas might be to get to accomplishing some of these phases.
Is there a way maybe to look at the best practices of other large cities and look at if there is some type of an impact fee or something where we can actually help build this master plan that we have?
Councilwoman Pastor and Councilman Nalkowski, that is part of what this group is doing, is they're providing us those options so we can evaluate and go forward in what the next process might be, if it's, if the city can do something, or if it's really going to have to be the private group that does it, and then we would have to find a resource some other way. So that is what we're going to look at.
And can we, as the City of Phoenix, look at maybe a grant writer, or somebody that can actually go after those grants and foundations and maybe get this ball started in making this a reality?
Indeed, and I think that's where the Hans Park Conservancy comes in, where we can partner with them as well.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question. Did somebody, I know that you've adopted the Margaret Hans Park Master Plan, but in all of this... In this whole process, the other piece is sometimes we need to make adjustments. And so who does somebody go to to discuss possibly wanting to put something on the park that is not necessarily marked on the master plan? What group do they go to to discuss these things?
Chairman Pastor and members of the subcommittee, they would start with the Parks Department, and then we would take the information back to our consultants and say, "Okay, this is another request. How does it fit in?" Or, "What do we, you know, what do we do?" And we maybe need to go back to the community, too, and say, you know, "Is this now a priority?" Because again, you can, depending on how long it takes us to get to the development, right, things could change over five years, six years, seven years. And so I think there's always this monitoring and adjusting that has to happen, but it has to involve community input.
Okay. My other question is, for example, if somebody has a, wants to do a memorial, and they have raised the private dollars, and they're ready to go, what is that process? Or maybe we need to define a process so that people then know what to do, and it's been written and defined, so we can move forward.
Chairman Pastor, members of the subcommittee, we do have a memorial policy that the Parks Board has. What we would want to make sure happens is, in any case where we're developing a park, we would want the, any kind of memorial to be very, talk to the park, right? We wouldn't want it to be something that's totally different and totally not blending with what the idea of the park is. So we would work together to make sure that that particular item really was, went hand and glove into the park, and wasn't just something that stood out so odd. So we would work together, make sure that happened.
And would they go to the Park Board to introduce this? And then, and then, does it go to the Margaret Hans Park group?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, Chairman Pastor and members of the subcommittee, there would be a process that the Parks Board would have to approve the memorial. And again, there's some guidelines we already have set. And then, once they approve the idea of a memorial, then we would see how it fit into the park and where it fit into the park, right? Now there is a placeholder for one memorial in particular.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilman Nalkowski?
You know, my concern is that, once we start putting memorials up, then you're going to have all kinds of groups coming in. I mean, this was a Hispanic community at one time, and a memorial for those homes and those home settlers that settled there. And, I mean, I can see that coming up. I can see veterans. I can see, I mean, it just goes on and on and on. I think we really need to figure out if we want this to be more of a central park, and if we want our memorials to be more at the Margaret Hans, I mean, at the state capitol, or what's an appropriate location, and if there's some type of cultural or historic means to it. Because I think that you can have a group of people that come up with all kinds of stuff and different causes, and is it something that's going to be longstanding for our community, and it's something cultural or historic behind it?
Chairman Pastor and Councilman Nalkowski, that is absolutely accurate, and I think that's why there's a policy in place. Traditionally, where the memorials have gone in the past have been at Steel Indian School Park. And so, again, you know, in the future, there's going to be a USS Phoenix memorial there as well, and that's already been approved. But, you know, at some point, is it a park or just an area with memorials? And so that's why the Parks Board has to see a yes or a no, and they do have that authority to say no to a memorial.
I have a card that I misplaced, and I think it's Marcia. Karasek?
Karasek.
Yeah, okay. If you could please go to the mic. You have two minutes.
Is there a clock?
It's...
Oh, there it is. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Marcia Karasek. I'm here to introduce myself as the new Executive Director for the Hans Park Conservancy. And I'd like to provide a few key updates, and most of all, acknowledge all the work and support that's been provided to date to make this moment possible. We're here talking about Hans Park now because of the visionary leadership in the city and the community that understood that Hans Park has the potential to be a significant asset for Phoenix. The Conservancy is dedicated to supporting a strong community around the park and setting up ambitious goals for the park, which support our community's health and well-being, sustainability, and education, not only through its design, but also through creative programming, which is so vital to the success of a park. So why wait? We are engaging now to find new ways to activate the park, and meeting with city staff and neighborhood leaders and cultural stakeholders to be a force for positive change for the park. So I've met with city staff, and of course, under the great leadership of Inger Erickson, at many levels, and including Mayor's Office, Arts Culture, and at many levels of city leadership, to understand how we can be of service. So we're engaged in a dialogue which provides opportunities for crossover between the cultural community and with business and civic leaders also, and finding opportunities to attract new audiences for our stakeholders, including the Art Museum and the Phoenix Theater, the Irish Cultural Center, Jewish Heritage, Phoenix Center for the Arts, all of the different stakeholders around the park. I also would like to invite you here today to the March 10 event to celebrate this unveiling of this next phase. It's in conjunction with Art Link, and you are all formally invited to celebrate with us, and it will be right at the epicenter, under the Central Avenue Bridge on the plaza.
I appreciate it. Are there any other questions? Well, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. Still have a lot to do. Item 12, Inger. Update on 3PI, on the Oversight Committee update.
I'm going to sit on both.
Yeah, exactly. Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, I'm here today to give you just an overview, again, of the Oversight Committee that was established by Mayor and Council in May of 2000. The responsibilities and duties of the Oversight Committee, as per the ballot language, is to assure accountability. All expenditures will be reviewed by a Citizens Oversight Committee, established by an ordinance to review expenditures, and will be subject to an annual public audit. So this gives the, this gives the community a formal forum for citizen participation. There's a five-year team, three-year staggered terms, currently, and one of those has to be a Parks and Recreation Board member. Currently, we just had two people appointed last council meeting, which was Roger Peck and Tom Chapman, Chapman, I'm sorry, and he is here today. I think he's the only one. I think we had several others who said they were coming, but I don't see them here today. And Bob Rink and Douglas Bobo were on the committee for the last couple of years. Again, they are authorized to review expenditures of 3PI program annually, and they review the Independent Certified Public Accountant's Report, which is the report that Grant Thornton has provided for us for the last several years. So those are their powers and duty of the committee. With that, it really is a very, they meet once a year. It's a, it's a very quick committee. They don't, they sometimes go out and see the facilities that we have, that we have actually created with the 3PI, but that isn't an official meeting. It's just a tour of the facilities. So we do take them on tours occasionally, too, if their schedules allow for that. So with that, I'd be willing to answer any questions about the Parks Preserve Initiative Oversight Committee.
Inger, question. The Oversight Committee, there's, are there four people that sit on it?
There's a total of five.
Five?
Four are citizens that are at large, and one is from the Parks Board.
Okay, so the Parks Board would be Roger Peck?
That's correct.
And then the other three are Bob, Douglas, and Tom?
That's correct.
And then where's the fifth?
We're waiting, we're waiting on an appointment. We believe that one will be appointed in early March, and then we can have our March meeting, as we intended to. We don't have a meeting set at this time, because we need to know if somebody can attend a meeting before we set the meeting. So we're waiting for that last appointment.
And Chairperson Pastor and members of the subcommittee...
And Chairperson Pastor, members of the subcommittee, we do have Patricia Duarte from Trellis that is due to go for potential approval before the mayor and council on March 2nd to fill the fifth seat of the board.
Okay. Councilman Nowakowski?
I was just going to ask about, do we look at different areas of the city to appoint these individuals? Because I think the 3PI program is something so important that it affects the whole city of Phoenix. So I was just wondering if it's by area, if we have people from southwest, east, north, the diversity of women and minorities, do we look at that? And if we're going to appoint someone, that we should keep that into consideration? So I'm not sure if there's any type of process or qualifications or how do we appoint these individuals besides making sure that there's one person from the Parks Board?
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, they are appointed by the mayor. And so we, when someone falls off, we ask the mayor's office for those appointments. And so that, they are appointed by the mayor.
A recommendation I like to make is maybe send it back to the Parks Board to look at some type of qualifications or some type of regional areas being represented so that all parts of the city are represented and some type of qualifications. Because I think that it's important that we have a diverse group of individuals from different areas of our city looking at, being appointed to these, to the board especially.
All right. Thank you. We have cards. So Jerry?
Thanks, Laura, subcommittee. This is part two of what we've been seeking for the public for years now. As I mentioned earlier, we now have the financial documents that an Oversight Committee needs to evaluate what's going on. And, but, we need, you know, one meeting for 30 minutes to look over $30 million worth of income is not enough. You know, at a minimum, we need two meetings a year, one to preview the expended expenditures and then another one to review these expenditures. And, you know, I mean, that's, that's the accountability and transparency that the public's looking for. And this is a huge amount of money to entrust. And, you know, we did mention last time that we want some financial expertise on this committee. And in lieu of that, in addition to it, we'd also want to be able to tap into the city auditor's office to sit in on these, if, you know, if necessary, and to provide any extra documentation to look at some of the expenses. Because we don't want to have to be, you know, pursuing these in litigation in the future. This is, this is the place to address it going forward. And, you know, we've got 25 more years on this extension of 3PI. And, you know, the total sum of the fund is over $1 billion. I mean, that's huge. And you're talking about the biggest asset the city has, our park system. So, you know, I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Can I go last, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Tom? Chapman?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Is this on? You may not. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission Committee. My name is Tom Chapman. For the record, I reside at 102 West Maryland Avenue. I am the current vice chair of the 3PI Committee. And Jerry, thank you very much. When I got on the committee, we were only having one meeting. We've started having more meetings and we will continue to do that. I think it's extremely important. As you all well know, all of us know what the Parks and Recreation Department are. I want to personally give a personal privilege point and say, we are so thrilled that we have a wonderful new director with us. You all be good to her and she'll be good to you, but it's absolutely important. And Councilman Nowakowski, what you said about the memorials, it's extremely important that they be intentional. Really appreciate that. Having served on the Arizona Commission, et cetera, I know about memorials and I totally agree with you. But that's why I'm here today, to hear, this is extremely important. And we also want to look to keep that money there. Regardless, if we're all gone 100 years from now, what is our, the greatest jewel in the crown is the Parks and Recreation Department. So please support us. Thank you very much, and we will continue to work with you and work with the whole city. Jerry, everybody, thank you.
Thank you. And Tim?
Good morning. Thank you once again. Tom, I'm making a formal request for you to step down today in front of the board. I have you on tape doing a conflict of interest, going for the funding of golf course for the debt to be paid. I have you on videotape asking these people to take the money from 3PI. We don't want people like you on the board. I'm now requesting you step down today, giving you the option of walking away because of what you've been doing. I understand what the Oversight Committee is, what it's about. You are not to voice opinions, you are not to go out and solicit so that they can take money from 3PI, and that's what you did. So I'm asking you once again, giving you the option, step down.
I need, I need you to speak about the oversight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And not.
Well, this is part of the oversight because of what we're doing at the present time. If you're looking at individuals, then we're asking people to be on the Oversight Committee and we're talking about the Oversight Committee and the transparency of the Oversight Committee, then we need individuals that are on this board who are not going out and selectively soliciting for their own agenda. And that's how I'm looping this and putting it all together. And I understand that. So when we have a board member going out and soliciting in this respect, we don't, this is not what the Oversight Committee is supposed to be doing. They're supposed to be looking at the money and making sure the money is protected. They are not supposed to be taking an interest in how the money is being taken in different areas.
Tom, what I understand is he was just placed on this board.
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, he was on the board prior and he was reappointed. That is accurate.
Thank you.
So we're just trying to make sure that the Oversight Committee are individuals who are going to look out for the welfare of the people. Thank you.
Tom, out of just fairness, would you like to respond or would you just like it to stay?
First time I ever heard about that.
Okay.
I'll check with you all.
Yes, please do. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, that's our, we're public.
Are there any questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
There were some, some points made. First, let me just, the first thing I'm going to say is I got to express my support for Tom Chapman, not only on this Oversight Committee, but on everything else and every other commission that he's served on with the city of Phoenix. We are fortunate to have Tom, as we are fortunate to have everyone else who spoke today. But, but this is a good man and a good representative of our city and, and I'm glad that he has agreed to volunteer his time for this very important process as well. I'm looking at the other names and, and these are people who are going to, I mean, I'm looking at the names and I'm thinking, yes, you know, they, these are people that will actually go through the numbers, do the work. I've had many conversations with Roger Peck, you know, for an example, and Roger is so knowledgeable and he, he has the history and, and so I'm looking forward to seeing this group in action. I do agree that there needs to be more than one scheduled formal meeting. You just heard Tom say that the committee is taking it, they're taking the initiative to just realize that. But I think, I think it's good for the public to see that this is not a stamp, you know? You look at the personalities, I think it's, and the names, and a lot of people know the names, many people, most probably, and when you consider the size of the city of Phoenix, most don't know the names. There's, there could be a perception, unfair perception, that this is a sort of a, you know, a rubber stamp type of committee. If there was something more formally, I do like the idea of having, you know, we do the same thing with our budget trials, right? We have meetings prior to the, leading up to that, we have meetings after. You know, I certainly don't want to, you know, make it something to where we're bogging down the process, and I'm not suggesting weekly meetings, but you hit the point, I think, I think more than one formal scheduled meeting a year, I think we need, we need to fix that, especially considering the fact that these members are already taking the initiative and they're already meeting multiple times anyway. But that said, and I also agree that Inger is a superstar, I'm fortunate to have you as our Parks and Recs Director. Thanks.
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, we certainly can have more than one meeting. We can have two formal meetings and we will make that happen. The other thing is, as people fall off of the Oversight Committee, we'll make sure that we are representing the entire community, both in location and diversity.
Right. I just think it's a valid point that one meeting or two meetings a year, really, you can't do it. I feel like, in a sense, you do do the pre-work and you do the, you get the items, you talk that day and then possibly, in the second meeting, really get to the details and the nitty-gritty. But that's up to the Oversight Committee and your leadership to determine how many meetings. We're just highly suggesting there'd be more than two. Greta, you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. I didn't hear your whole presentation, Inger, but as you all know, I've been at the forefront of this situation since point of beginning, almost three years ago, March 7, 13. This is an unlawful taking of money from 3PI to pay off golf debt, which multiple councils had allowed to accumulate for 15 years. Irresponsible, criminally negligent. But you don't steal money to further exacerbate the negligence that councils and mayors practiced here for 15 years. I want this money repaid. I want a plan for repayment and we will sit with Inger and Deanna, and if necessary, with Ed, and get this budgeted and planned so that it is fully repaid. Also, as far as the Oversight Committee is concerned, it's a fig leaf. No committee can meet and go over and audit once a year in half an hour. I don't care if you're auditors and accountants, and none of them is. I would like to be appointed to the vacancy on this committee. I can read accounting data and audit data and I have a pretty good sense of financial responsibility. Thank you.
I don't think that's a motion that I can make, can it? Can I? Yeah, no, I'm being facetious, but it'd be great to have Greta on that.
Yes. So let's look at that. Any other questions? Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Item number 13, Inger, you might as well just stay right there. Oh, she's last, okay. Mo and Rita and Gail. Gail, you'll get us started.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. We have a budget review update for you this morning. Mo, help me, this way. So just another quick reminder about our budget and why it looks so different from last year. There are three main components of our budget. Salaries, our grants program, which is about $600,000, and 2.3 million is for maintenance for seven cultural facilities, which we have taken over from Public Works in this year. Looking at our monthly expenditures, this is why you see this kind of great variance from last year to this year. And we're kind of following along in terms of the normal pattern. We're expecting to see, the only real difference is between December and January, that about $20,000 has to do with increased costs, which we expected in landscaping and facilities maintenance for those facilities. And these top 10 expenditures is what we'll kind of continue to see throughout the year. The grants and subsidies is at the, shows at the, probably the full 17% now because those expenditures are made in July and August, so that money's already been spent, whereas the other expenses will come in throughout the course of the year. No other expenditures and then no changes to the grants that we have in our budget for this year.
Thank you. You have any questions? Go ahead, Mo.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. The human services budget is just under $61.8 million. The majority of that is federal and state funds, about 70%. As far as our monthly expenditures are concerned, when we look at January, the variance is under 4%. Overall, it's approximately 15%. And that is attributed mostly to the higher expenditures of our early Head Start Child Care Partnership Grant, which was not in the budget previously, and so you'll have higher expenditures as we go out throughout the year. With regards to the top 10 expenditures, of course, on any given month, there can be a, an expenditure that wasn't there before. And so as an example, with the reference in education materials, in Head Start, we had the early Head Start Child Care, $24,000 of materials and supplies that hit the budget that particular month. That's one example, the delegate agency training is, we had the training in the month of January and then you see it pop as a top 10 expenditure. There are no other anomalies in the expenditures. And as far as the revenues collected, the one thing, we've talked about this in months previously, one thing I would like to point out is on the rental, I reported last month that when we had the change of, the transition of the management company at the Family Advocacy Center, we had a delay in payments. And last month, the difference was approximately $142,000. Now it's $40,000. You can see it's catching up and that'll catch up as the year progresses. And that's it. Mr. I have any other questions?
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Chairwoman, members of the committee. Library budget, $35 million, which supports the maintenance and operation of 17 facilities and the staffing for those facilities. In the monthly expenditures, we're continuing our up-down, up-down pattern. As you can see, we, if you look at the bottom line, are roughly right on track to spend our budget very fairly. And in January, we do see a rather large increase, $2 million, over expenditures from comparing to the last year. And that is because we did a very large expenditure for library materials. This is, the spring publishing season is beginning and we have encumbered a large amount, approximately 1.9 million, in purchase orders to our three major vendors for library, print library materials and audio library materials. So library materials will now drop because this expenditure, this encumbrance will last through the rest of the fiscal year. So you will not see library materials as high in the ranking because our three major vendors will be covered by this encumbrance. Otherwise, I think those are the usual lineup of materials that are expended and we have nothing else out of the ordinary except that one. And then for revenues, running a little ahead with copier printer fees and behind in library fees because of the issues we've talked about before, automatic renewal and digital materials. Any questions?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, as you can see, our budget is just over $1 million, 1.5 million, which is the same as it has been this last year. This year, in January, we were slightly higher. This year, in January, we were slightly higher than we were last year at this time. And it's primarily because of a timing issue on a SRP payment, which I'll talk about in just a second. But, overall, we're 1.39% under where we were last year at the same time. So, salaries, again, we're losing people quicker than we can actually hire them. So, that's going to be a continuous situation until we can actually get ahead of that curve. And we're working really hard to do that. Main HR is really helping us on that. We have fewer employees, so that's one of the reasons why pension contribution is lower. On the landscape maintenance, you see a difference there. That's because we were charging the wrong GL, so it wasn't actually recording in the right location. So, that this year will be accurate and the next year will be accurate again. I mentioned on the water, the timing issue for potable water from SRP, $70,000 is the difference there. And that's pretty much the difference that we saw in the overall expenditures as well. And so, once the timing issue gets back to normal, we'll be fine on that one as well. And again, it's a minor. It's .06 on that one as far as the difference. No real unusual expenditures to note. And then on the revenues, this is good news. You know, we're higher here, even though on the general fund, we're a little bit lower because of the auction rental changed for the pavilion. We are, golf is showing that it's slightly under last year. And again, that's a timing issue because on the reports that staff is doing in the field, we're actually, we actually have sold more rounds than we have. So, we think that's a timing issue related to SAP and getting the information out of SAP. Classes and programs, we're really doing much better on classes and programming, getting the fees in in a timely fashion. So, that's why it's up a little bit there. We talked about the grants last year. Last year, we didn't get them into the system and so the timing issue again, so this, that's why you see such a large difference in the grants. Gifts and donations, we had several new gifts this year. The Diamondbacks gave us a gift for aquatic swim lessons. The Brewers donated money for the Light Up The Sky. And Global Family Philanthropy gave money for Sunny Slope. So, we have small gifts coming all over, which is very beneficial to the overall programs. We're receiving more interest in 3PI currently. Monopole revenue is up and that's because we have one more location at Pecos Park. We're charging higher fees with a new contract related to the tennis center. So, you see that's, that's why that is up. So, again, we're on an upward trend with the revenues, which is good for us. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Councilwoman Nowakowski?
I just have questions on this whole budget update. I like to see maybe the current budget because it's kind of hard, especially when it comes to the arts and culture, because you have a different, you're different from last year's budget. So, it seems like you're really far off. But, if we can have maybe current budget, I mean, current, whatever it is currently, then we can have what's budgeted and then the variance between that two. And then maybe, and then we continue to have that line item where it's last year's and what's the variance of this year and last year's. This way, it kind of makes more sense if you're sitting on this side of the table and you really don't know what your budgets are and you can compare it.
I am... Anything else? I have a question about the landscaping. Because didn't we, we shifted landscaping to transportation. We shifted vacancies. So, my question is, has that happened?
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, we're still working through the details on that. We believe that, we believe that we'll have that in place. We're working closely with streets. We meet regularly and we expect that will be done by the fall at the latest. But, we have to go out for RFPs and all that. It's a very lengthy process because we want to make sure we do it right so that we don't have to come back and make adjustments. So, we've worked on the transition plan. That particular line item we're talking about here is not the street landscaping portion. This portion of landscape maintenance is the portion where the trailheads and the other facilities are maintained. OB Sports, for example, maintains the, some of the areas for us. And then we have, so it's two different things. But, we are still working through the street transportation. We expect, we're going to transition the positions in the coming weeks so that they are out of the Parks Department. And then the money can be allocated and available for them to go out and do their bidding.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking that is there's some confusion going on, especially down Central Avenue, as to who maintains the streets. And so, in particular, there are some areas that trimming is happening, where trimming should not be happening. And we have oleanders that are down to a foot. And the constituent is asking, who is in charge of this area? And they're being told, well, one piece is parks, one piece is transportation and one piece is a third party. So, we need all of that, only because we voted last year on this to streamline it, make sure it happened, and it's, there's still confusion.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, currently, we are responsible for that. So, if there's something in particular, I can follow up with you and make sure we address that particular situation. But, we are working to make sure that it is one group that does the whole thing so there is no longer any confusion.
Okay. Councilwoman Wray?
Thanks. That's fantastic if it's just, I don't even care which department and so forth, just as long as it's one that, this came up yesterday, we had a meeting. You weren't able to attend, so you weren't aware of it, but your staff was there. It's not their fault. It's just like one side of the street, signs, I guess, are the same on both sides of the street. I think it's 56th Street. But, the citizens wanted the signs to be bigger and more obvious about the horse park that's there. But, it was then, well, we got to get transportation too because one side of the street, they do it and one side is, we do it, but it's the same sign. And obviously, that didn't go over particularly well with the citizens who just sort of were like, well, how many people do we have to have at this meeting? So, you know, anything that can simplify that, because this has come up a bunch of times with different projects in my area.
Madam Chair and Councilman, that is our goal. And certainly, if things happen in meetings, we can certainly work with the other department, make sure those things happen.
And then... Is this Greta? Is this for item? Oh, okay, okay, got it. All right. Thank you. Now, we have call to the public. Greta?
With regard to the 3PI debt and the Golf Division, which allegedly caused the indebtedness, I would like for this Committee to receive and report at your next Subcommittee meeting and no later than April, a full accounting of the Golf Division in the last two years. Thank you.
Thank you. And any future agenda items? We have the nonprofit coming up. Any other ones?
You know, I like to see the, just nominating individuals to the 3PI, some type of process that we create. I'm not sure if it's this Subcommittee, if we can do it, then it goes to the full Council for approval? Because does the Mayor appoint?
It's the Mayor.
So, can we guide, can we... Is that charter or can we, can we change that? Or can we kind of give them some guidelines on how to do that? Making sure...
I think officially, officially, it's the, we have appointments. But, there are Mayor appointments and there are Council appointments. I believe this is a mayoral appointment. And, you know, I mean, the Mayor's not here, but I will say, he's always been very open for discussion and recommendations as well.
May I suggest that we have this dialogue with the Mayor and...
That's a good suggestion.
And have that conversation and let him know how we're, how we're looking at it on the Committee.
Perfect. I would love to, and I just will also, you know, we have, we have these gentlemen who show up almost every Peyton meeting. Of course, Ms. Rogers is here. It'd be great to have, to give these guys a crack at being on a Committee like that as well. So, I'm definitely, I'm definitely for that. But, again, that's the Mayor's decision.
Okay. So, we will, I will organize a meeting. Any other future agenda items? Would you like something? Councilwoman Wray?
No, it's okay.
Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned.